I'd like to call tonight's, call the order tonight. Yeah, right. Start again. I'd like to call the order tonight's meeting of the Gardner zoning board of appeals, September 21st, 2021. Uh, before we begin tonight's hearings, I'd like to go over a few, a few of the ground rules upon which we operate. In Gardner, three members of the zoning board of appeals must be present to conduct a legal hearing. Applications will normally be heard in the sequence in which they appeared in the public notice, although the board is no under, under no obligation to adhere to that sequence. All hearings are open to the public and no person shall be excluded unless he or she is considered to be a hindrance to the workings of the board. An applicant may appear in his or her on behalf or be represented by an attorney or an agent. The applicant or his or her representative shall present the case to the board. Representatives of the city shall be heard. A butters to the property present at the hearing shall be heard. And any other interested parties present at the hearing shall be heard. Those in opposition to the application shall also be heard. The board must render its decision with regard to a variance within a hundred days after the application was duly filed in the office of the city clerk. The board regarding special permits must conduct a public hearing within sixty-five days after the application was filed in the office of the city clerk. The board must render its decision within ninety days after the public hearing. All three members of the board must vote in favor of the variance or the special permit for it to be granted and approved. The right to appeal the decision of this board is provided for in the zoning act with the information which is available in the office of the city clerk. The burden for supporting the need for a variance or special permit rests with the applicant or representative of the applicant. The board requests that each person identify himself or herself as to the name, address for addressing the board. Sitting on tonight's hearing, to my left, immediate left is Mike O'Gary. To my far left is Mel Cornet and I'm acting, Randy Hagland acting as the chair this evening. And this meeting will be taped. Does anybody object to the meeting being taped? Okay, um, I'll just go briefly over the agenda that was posted, duly posted and see how another public locations as is required. I'd like to make an announcement too, that uh, any person may make a video audio recording of the open session of a meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium subject to reasonable requirements to the chair as to the number of placement and operation of the equipment used so as not to interfere with the conduct of the meeting. Any person intending to make such recording shall notify the chair forthwith. All documents referenced or used during the meeting must be submitted in duplicate to the clerk. All documents will become part of the official meeting of the record. Is anybody recording other than uh, local access TV?
Yeah, I plan to record since my turn is not here.
Pardon me?
My turn, I don't see my turn here today. Is it okay to record when they come and you call?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, so meeting, uh, agenda was posted, today is September 21st, 2021. And uh, there are three hearings um, on the agenda tonight. First one is case 2021 dash oh six oh two. It's a special permit for seventy-five Oak Street, a multifamily home. Second uh, case to be heard this evening is 2021 dash oh eight oh eight. It's for variance at four ninety-two Main Street for Bank of America ATM signage. And the third case we're hearing this evening is case number 2021 dash oh nine oh one. It's a, says a special permit, but it's actually a variance for three oh eight West Broadway for Starbucks. Okay, so we'll call the meeting to order, hearing order, we'll call the first case. Um, it's case number 2021 dash oh six oh two. It's a special permit at seventy-five Oak Street, multifamily home. It's an application on behalf of the BCF Investments LLC to operate a three, three residential units at seventy-five Oak Street, Gardner, Mass. Parcel ID Amazon Mary twenty-seven dash twenty-four fifty-seven, located in the general residential three zoning district. And it was denied as it did not comply with chapter six seventy-five attachment one colon one of the city code of Gardner. The zoning code require, states that the requested use. Excuse me. Number four, three to four family dwelling requires a special permit. In the general residential three zoning district. BCF Investments LLC, yeah. Uh, we do have a letter from, from your attorney here that we received this afternoon. I'll read it into the record. Stated, uh, September 21st, 2021, it's addressed to the Gardner zoning board of appeals, one fifteen Pleasant Street, room one oh one, Gardner. And regarding case number 2021 dash oh six oh two, BCF Group Incorporated at seventy-five Oak Street. Dear sir or madam, please withdraw the application for a special permit without prejudice regarding seventy-five Oak Street, Gardner, Mass, oh one four four oh. If you have any questions, please do not hesitate to contact our office. Sincerely, Christine, Christine M. Tree Esquire. Um, is this, this is your desire to withdraw your application at this point?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion then to uh, allow leave to withdraw the application without prejudice?
So moved.
Second? All's in favor?
Aye.
Application is withdrawn without prejudice. Okay, thank you, sir. Excuse me. Okay, the second case this evening is case number 2021 dash oh eight oh eight. It's for variance at four ninety-two Main Street. The Bank of America ATM signage. Application, it's an application to construct a sign at four ninety-two Main Street, Gardner, Mass. Parcel ID R twenty-two dash twenty-two dash forty, located industrial one zone. Is denied as it does not comply with the approved site plan for the property. Also a variance for signage was granted for this property down in August the twenty-third, two thousand and twelve. Representatives of the Bank of America or four ninety-two Main Street. Yes, sir.
Uh, Jake Desto with Stonefield Engineering. I am here representing uh, the applicant for the CBRE Bank of America. Hi, this is Jake, from C B R E. So, the property we're talking about tonight was the four ninety-two Main Street. This is Price Shopper. It's important to understand where we are located, associated with Price Shopper. We are located actually further the Sherman and Main Street intersection. Now this parcel was subdivided from the larger overarching uh, development which was Price Shopper. So we are actually one point three uh, six acre parcel located more again at that Main Street and Sherman intersection. So we are a separate parcel. Now looking at the Price Shopper, there was a variance that was requested or granted um, for the Price Shopper, for the signage. And subject to that, we are required um, to submit for a, this is an exacerbation of that variance because our parcel was subject to that larger overarching development. So, the location of the existing Price Shopper freestanding sign is located across Main Street. It's at the entrance, um, along Main Street, it's a signalized intersection. Um, and there's obviously associated building signage. That is in excess of, it was four hundred and sixty-six square feet. Um, now what the applicant is looking to do is to construct a small ATM kiosk located within um, the, we'll call it the one point six, the out parcel uh, for the larger shopping center away from the Price Shopper. It's a separate parcel. It is a small walk-up ATM. Uh, it sits, sits more, no more than eleven or twelve feet in height. Um, it's about a five by eight and a half foot box. Uh, it's a small kiosk. This is a visual representation, it's a rendering of both the, the signage that we are proposing, so the freestanding sign and the ATM that the boards are referencing. So this is actually looking westbound, as if you were heading, uh, you basically, you pass by the signalized intersection, heading west. So that is just a visual showing that. So the sign itself is just under thirty square feet, it's twenty-nine point seven five square feet. Um, and is located ten feet from the property line at the hard corner. Now, looking at this application compared to the last one, especially you know, looking at some of the post and you know, approvals for the Price Shopper, we took a look at, you know, what was approved, um, and its location. Now our location for the ATM is actually set close to two hundred feet away from uh, the sign. The signs really provide us with, with wayfinding, right? Being able to have customers safely get to and from the location. I think it's important to understand some of the topographic changes as we go, uh, if you, I'm just going through another rendering. So as you go up eastbound uh, Main Street, you can, you have a slight, it's curvature of the roadway, there's some foliage blocking the actual uh, ATM location. So we do think it's important um, that we have the Bank of America logo sign located up in front uh, with appropriate, proper size to clearly, I provide a safe uh, basically identification away.
Excuse me, which uh, which entry point onto that property are you considering to be the main entry?
The main entry for the Price Shopper, we're expecting most of our traffic to be, is actually from uh, the, the existing signalized intersection. Um, however, we do note that a lot of times people, I know myself today, may get the left to the Price Shopper because I saw the Price Shopper sign, I want to make a safe maneuver um, into the um, the actual Sherman Street uh, right away. So, we want to locate the proper site distance, the ability for our customers to see and recognize where the actual ATM is located. Um, you know, these, these are mostly because of that and the location. And I think it's in line with um, what was previously approved. You can actually see uh, the Price Shopper sign. You can see, again, this is only, I think it's two and a half, uh, two hundred and fifty feet away from this sign. You can see how much, um, how small it is as you, you know, progress up uh, Main Street uh, towards the site. So, do you think it's in line with a lot of the other um, signs in the area? Going west down, going back down um, from the signalized intersection, we did identify as the main entrance. There is this building that does protrude almost at the property line, that does block quite a bit of site distance to the, to the actual ATM. Again, you can visually see how small that eight, that sign does get um, from the eastbound uh, Main Street visual. You, we're, we're expecting that exact same issue to happen here. You come around the corner, we don't know. We expect, again, if you're trying to get to the shopping center, you know it, it's a pass-by user, we're expecting people to know where it is. But if you don't know, um, the, the intent here is that you would, you would pass by and you, you would see it almost too late. We'd like to crowd people in here, but if we don't have that sign here, you would easily bypass it. Um, you know, Google Maps is, is one thing when people are trying to find it on their way, uh, maybe to a different location, not Price Shopper. But I think visually, you know, these provide us what we need, um, to be, you know, provide safe access to the site.
What did you say the setback was from Sherman Street, let's say to the rear of that ATM?
Twenty, it's uh, twenty-two feet.
Twenty-two feet?
Yeah.
Is there anything to prevent people from pulling over on Sherman Street and walking across the lawn to that?
Uh, there's no sign, like parking, I would, not that I'm in the air of.
You had mentioned the uh, the two lots, there was an out lot that was, I guess, yes, the site. Is it common ownership though?
Uh, I believe it is. I have to confirm though.
Okay.
Bank of America's not buying the parcel, we are just leasing.
Leasing, yeah, absolutely.
Just leasing a small portion of the properties.
Can you, um, you, you mentioned the sign, um, for the sake of the audience, is twenty-nine point seven five square feet. Can you give us some dimensions? I know it's in your application, some dimensions off of, off of the uh, off the ground, how high off the ground it is? Dimensions of the signs.
Visual for everybody. Approximately six feet off the, off the ground. Again, with the uh, the overall size, uh, just being under eight feet, uh, with the total square footage of twenty-nine point seven five.
Is that a lit sign?
It is.
Internal?
Internal, it is.
Bottom of the sign is thirty, thirty, thirty inches?
Yep. It's away, it's away from pedestrians, it's ten feet away from any pedestrian access at a minimum, so not expecting any kind of height issues.
Is it, can we go back to, I guess, that pictorial there? That is the scale that's a representative, representation of what it's going to look like?
Yeah, as close as we can, yes.
Is there any impact to site distance for vehicular traffic coming out of Sherman Street and turning left?
No. You'll be able to pull clear past that to this location, actually see a stop car here.
Mm-hmm.
Setback, you know, just go to the left, right. Uh, our office isn't going to impair any kind of site movement.
Okay.
You can see it just, it does tail out, almost, you tease up, so you actually come out a little bit further in the sign, sign will be located in this general area.
Okay. Internally eliminated, twenty-four hours a day, obviously because your ATM is available twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week? Um, can you go, give us some rationale why you can't use the existing freestanding sign again?
So the existing freestanding sign is located, I'd say almost, it is three hundred and fifty feet away from our proposed, um, our proposed uh, location. I actually think we'd still be back in front of you for a size variance because that was only approved, um, with the set number of size. Again, that was a, it was four hundred and sixty-six square feet and that sign was part of it. Uh, totally, I think it was seventy-three uh, square feet. Um, so, I'd be still be back in front of you, not a freestanding sign, but it's a part of the construction. So we think having it closer to the actual facility that we are signing for is a better operation, especially at the hard corner where we like to have signs. You can see the same thing here, it's at the hard corner of this intersection driveway, same with Sherman and Main Street.
Questions from the board?
I'm good.
No, I'm good. Okay, um, in a variance, there are three, three questions that you need to address. Um, I didn't see it addressed in the application, um, but I know it was attached to. It was attached to the application, but I didn't see them individually attended, so I'll go through them, um. Can you talk to us about how you feel a little enforcement of position of the provisions of the code would involve substantial hardship, financial otherwise, to the petitioner relating, with circumstances relating to soil condition, shape, with topography of the land?
I think we spoke about the topography coming up and the safety concern actually, uh, from the site, uh, from adjoining road networks. Um, the configuration of the parcel itself, um, as it relates, we would be compliant if this, the Price Shop, there was not an existing variance on the, the overall development. We'd be able to have a freestanding sign and our building signage, um, by code.
Okay, um, does your proposal create or aggravate a safety hazard?
No, I think it actually increases.
What are you finding, sign?
Yeah.
And obviously you request derogates from the intended, you know, purpose of the code because you're here this evening. You know, you, you've laid out a case of why you feel that this, this second uh, freestanding sign is, is appropriate. If the board shall decide to not approve second freestanding sign, what is your plan B?
Um, I have to, I think we have to evaluate the bank. I actually don't know a plan B at this time. Uh, with not having the necessary signage, you know, for this ATM, we have to evaluate that. So, you know, I don't know if we'd have the customer safety, uh, you know, related directional for the bank.
Okay. All right, um, anything else from the board? I'll go to the audience. No, no? Are the representatives of the city would like to speak with regard to this application? Mr. Jean?
Through the chair, Jake, have you guys done any research on how we're going to power the ATM and the sign?
Uh, the ATM will be pulling off, there's electrical pool actually on the west side of Sherman Street, and it'll be running a conduit to the ATM, which will then feed.
With, with your own service?
Uh, with our own service, yes.
Your own?
This will be completely separate, everything we're proposing will be controlled by the bank, um, as part of the application.
The other question I have is there's no entrance there, so what is this sign telling people? They're telling people that there's an ATM in the parking lot.
Right.
And it seems like a sign at the main entrance would do the same thing. Because this sign doesn't tell people that they need to turn up Sherman Street and take a right to get to your ATM.
At, at that point, you've identified, the, the main, the main point is if you, if you haven't identified at this point from, from here, able to make the turn into the shopping center, um, you'd be able to make the left. At that point, you're passing by the ATM, so there is a little bit of ATM, uh, Bank of America branding signage around it. You should be able to, at that point, identify uh, the ATM, uh, because you'll be driving by it.
Okay.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman, then.
Thank you. Mr. Buragad?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Trevor Buragad, Director of Community Development Planning for the city. Um, just a few things, the site is actually owned by the same entity, both, both parcels. I did speak to the uh, commercial firm that recently purchased it out of Denham about a month ago. Um, and made them aware of what was going on here. Um, so as you, as you probably know, the original site plan approval decision conditioned that any application for a variance to the city's sign ordinance shall be approved by the planning board prior to submission to the zoning board of appeals for this project, when it was originally approved in two thousand, two thousand and eleven.
That was a condition of your site plan approval?
It was.
Really? Okay, I wasn't aware of that.
Yeah, in July, July thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, the planning board held a meeting, had this proposal in front of them. Um, at that meeting, I did comment that the sign seems like overkill, uh, for an ATM to have a sign of that size. Unfortunately, the planning board proceeded to then vote to approve the sign plan so the, uh, applicant can move forward to the ZBA for approval of variance. Only after that did I finally locate the approved site plan, uh, for this, it was buried on my table in my office unfortunately. I did notice on the approved site plan, there was an approved pad at that corner of the site for I think a three to four thousand square foot building, uh, which again, I think would be problematic if a sign was located there, especially a sign six feet by nine feet in size.
So Mr. Madesto, I'll answer that question. I remember that, that pad being there. If, if that site is developed with a pad as was in the original site, site plan, what happens to your sign?
So I don't know too much of the actual, we'll call proceedings, if this was the develop. I think I've never seen a plan where the building was generally located in the green space here. I think that actually speaks more to the needs of the sign, right? Because if the building is located here, we're actually blocking the ATM itself, right? The, the ident, the identification sign becomes even more prominent. I, I don't have the setback or the plans that was approved for that location, but I remember it being upward in the front. I can't remember if it was twenty feet or fifteen feet, the sign would still be visible and I think the need for it, again, would be actually exacerbated because of blocked sidelines.
Okay. Mr. Buragad, you said the property has recently been transferred?
Yep.
So, the, the file we have from attorney Wickstrom, is that still valid as the owner's representative?
I can't speak to that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not here as far as the owner, I'm here on the TBR.
I, I, okay.
But they did sign, the owner, the current owner did sign the application for us to submit.
Simra Gardens LLC, is that the current owner?
I, I don't think so. I think that's the previous owner.
Yeah, it was, um, I can't remember the actual, uh, it was, I want to say it was black.
Yes, black, black.
It was black something, give me, I'll put it on there. The original was a black building. I think it turned to like another substance, the, I think they actually sold the LLC, it's a different address, it's a different owner. No, you're right, you're right, it is the Gardens.
Simra Gardens is the current owner?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, we do, uh, just for the record, we do have a letter from the property owners, um, attorney and agent authorizing the petitioner to Bank of America and CBRE to, to make an application to seek asylum relief.
I'm sure if there was an, uh, another change of ownership that right was passed along to the owner. I mean, that's, that's, I don't think that's a question. The only, I mean, the issue I have obviously is the size of the sign, the location, um, the potential to affect what was originally matched to brands on the site. Um, you know, my opinion, I, I think the applicant should pursue signage on the standalone pylon sign that's already been approved and located at the site. Um, you know, you have a potential of a half dozen more businesses thrown in there with a full buildout with sixty more thousand square feet approved for a buildout at that site. If every single one of those businesses wants a standalone sign.
Looks pretty crowded pretty quick, yeah.
Yeah. Uh, that whole green space on the front is going to be pretty crowded. Um, so, I, you know, I, I'd like to see the applicant work with the current owner and try to come up with a, a better signage plan or, or another location for that sign, i.e. on the, on the existing pylon.
Got it. I mean, just as, as far as that, you know, I hate to, that forgotten says it, but it is speculation right now as far as the development and when that is going to occur. Um, you know, we are under a lease contract, obviously it's renewed, um, every so often. Um, so that may not be renewed, uh, if a future development comes on. Believe any application was to come in from with proposed signage, it would be then in front of this board to make the determination, um, whether or not that the proposed signage is fitting, at that time. Uh, we don't know, there's nothing been proposed, that's my knowledge, that's the bank's knowledge. Um, again, the landlord has signed off on this location. I think they're, they're full in understanding the restrictions that would be put on the property or the, you know, the, the request that would be put in the property and anything going in front of, you know, as far as new development would have to go in front of the board for that signage.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Mr. Buragad?
The, the pad has been approved already, the signage hasn't. For that reason, I would ask the board not to vote in favor of this application for areas. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Buragad. Are there any butters to the property who'd like to speak in favor of this application? Are there any butters to the property who'd like to speak in favor? Are there any butters who, butters who'd like to speak in opposition to this application? Are there any butters who'd like to speak in opposition? Um, is there anybody present who would like to speak with regard to this application, the pro work on? Anybody present like to speak with regard to this application? Um, Mr. Madesto, um. You know, I, I, I made a note too, that there's almost thirty square feet for the signage. What, if this was reduced down in size, what, what are the other standard options that Bank of America has?
Um, as far as signage, I have to go back to exactly the square foot numbers, don't hold, I haven't put this on the record, but I, there are a smaller package. I believe there is a, a twenty and a fifteen square foot sign that accompanies some of these ATMs we've seen in the past. Again, Bank, the Bank of America has.
The ATMs or is it a full-service bank?
It's, it's an ATM. It's a walk-up ATM. Uh, the only thing you basically can't do at these ATMs is take out a mortgage. I mean, you can make deposits, it's, it is the future of most banking, that if people are, you know, in a company with frickin' wars, the bank's proposing.
Okay. I guess one thought came to mind, how many parking spaces will be taken up with, with this?
Three.
Not, you, they're only, you're only going to lose three?
Three parking spaces, we'll be fully compliant, I think there's five hundred and ninety-one parking spaces on the site.
Okay. That answers it. You're, um, the ATM's not removing any of those trees along Sherman Street?
No, we kept it all within the actual parking.
Within the parking?
Utilizing some of the existing.
Okay. There's those, trees are put up as a, as a screen. I think most of this, the variance was related to the signage on the building, or as I recall.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? No? Okay. Desire?
Definitely like to do a site visit.
Okay, um. I like, I, I, I think it perhaps is a good idea. What we've done with sign requests in the past, I mean, we don't need a sheet of plywood and, you know, some kind of configuration to get a sense of the size of the sign, how it's going to be located, how high off the ground. We, we've required that in the past of sign applications. And I think that would probably be appropriate for the one, I mean, I still have a, a little bit of a concern about site distance looking to the left up, up Main Street.
In, in what sense?
Well, I think, you know, it's thirty inches.
Are, are you seeing coming from Sherman, or are you seeing?
Yeah, coming out of Sherman Street, you know, I, I, I just want to, in my own mind, be sure that it's, 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 it's not impacting the site distance in that direction. But it can be just something fabricated from some two by threes or two by twos or something, just to get a sense of the dimensions and the size. Good?
Yeah. I'm good.
So that would just be for that sign?
Yeah, just that, because that's the only one you're, you're seeking a variance for is the, the freestanding sign.
If we went to a smaller configuration, if I was able to speak with my client about.
Yeah, it's still freestanding, it's been the same vote.
With the understanding that we'd go with a smaller freestanding sign, maybe alleviate some of the concerns that you may have regarding the visual from the left?
Perhaps.
Perhaps.
I think we'd know more after the site visit.
Site visit.
How long do you think you need to, um, come up with some type of, or you need to have a discussion with your applicant, with the applicant?
Yeah.
And also to come up with some kind of mock-up dimensionally size? It's, like I said, it's a temporary thing, it can be just scrap wood, I don't care what it, you know.
Right.
It could be tieback.
I, I, I don't know, maybe thirty days is something that, for the next hearing, I don't know if that's possible.
Um, we generally like to do site visits prior to the next meetings. But Rachel was telling me that our October meeting is, is booked solid. So it'd probably be continued to November anyway. Maybe, why don't you?
So, yeah, just to be very honest with, with the board and, and everyone in the public, you know, this, this is slated. We are trying to get this done as fast as possible. You know, I think actually timeline too for the bank in this scenario is actually a big dictator of moving forward.
Then they should have applied sooner.
We, there is a, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I.
We're concurrent with the planning.
Right.
Don't force us to rush our schedule, please.
I'm, I'm not, I'm not trying to, to, to push the, the, I was trying to go somewhere else with this actually. Is it possible to get a conditional approval with, I guess, if we eliminated the signage?
The sign is the only item that's before us. Whether you can obtain a permit for everything else on the site, that's up to, to Mr. Jean.
And so then?
So, if you wanted to.
Yeah, I guess.
Roll the dice and roll the dice on the signage and say, well.
The question would be, I guess, is, you know, if we could come under a separate application for, if, if the applicant, I'm just talking, I mean, I need to talk to the board, the professionals a little bit further, but if the applicant was to remove the sign from the application now and then proceed with a different application for a, 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 a sign mounted on that existing price shopper sign, would that be a separate application or would that, would that need to be accompanied by this ATM? I need to understand this in order to proceed with the bank.
Amend the application?
The, to move it to the.
Freestanding pylon.
To the freestanding pylon sign.
He says it's gonna exceed the square footage, so it's a different issue.
It would, it would be a, a separate application, yes.
Separate, different issue.
The building, the ATM itself has signs on it as well. So this, this hearing tonight is not only for the freestanding sign, it's for the signs on the building because the, the site has already maxed out for signs. So any sign requires a variance at this point.
Oh, I didn't, uh.
That, that's what I was.
I guess I didn't understand, I didn't, I didn't understand that.
You said the free, so I started jumping on that.
I didn't understand that, I, 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 um.
Yeah, so the, the ATM, if we can go to the ATM too, that helps the board, you know, to be very clear, outside of signs, we can get the ATM signage. So you can see the Bank of America brand logo. This is actually just under one square foot, this is just under six square feet. There's four sides of the Bank of America branding going around the ATM.
They illuminate internally illuminated all the way around? I know when previous variance was up before us with, with Price Shopper, there was a lot of concern with regard to the Sherman Street side and what the glare would be from, you know, the signage and, and, and I'm not sure I understood the representatives of Price Shopper or whether they were not necessarily a hundred percent, you know, for right with the board. But the glare on the budding properties on Sherman Street is pretty significant, exactly, just from the existing signs. How bright are these?
In, in what sense?
How bright are these signs?
Illumination, I don't have that number. You know, we normally look at light generation and foot candles and glares, sometimes tough to identify. Obviously, looking directly at a light's a little different than the light generated from it.
Yeah, I, I know.
I know you're trying, I don't have that one, sorry.
Seems like there, there's some places are lighting.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, Mr. Trevor. Mr. Burgad.
So they did submit a lighting plan with their packet. I believe it might be a more packet too.
It, it is. The lighting, the lighting plan only. It doesn't address glare, that's what, the lighting plan doesn't address glare, and that's the issue.
Yeah, and, and I don't think from a, a metric standpoint, it's tough to measure glare in any metric. I think that's actually why we come up with the, you know, as engineers, we come up with the one-foot candle or the light generation. Because it's, it's, again, it's a different light. If you look, you stare directly at a light, it's gonna blind you, it's, it's different than what's being generated from it. So there's no, you know, way to quantify glare?
Okay, I missed, I, I was misunderstood, I thought for sure it was just related to the freestanding sign.
Yes, that's, that's kinda what I was bringing up, the, the freestanding signs. If it's a separate application for the freestanding, I could work with the bank on, on a separate application and we obtain approval for the ATM. I think that the, you know, the bank would be available at least coming back or at least evaluating that further under a separate application for that freestanding sign, without question. The ATM signage, I think it's, it, it's, it's a neat must-have as far as branding, identification, locations. You know, it's not significant, it's compliant without by code, without the Price Shopper, you know, overarching variance. You know, we're, we're looking at, you know, a one, just, just under a one square foot sign and, and then a, and a five-point, I think it's nine-seven square foot sign.
So it'd be ten, eleven, twelve square feet total?
Yeah, approximately.
Something like that.
Like fourteen square feet.
Yeah, I apologize, I totally missed that. Yeah, as your application does say proposed signage to include wall sign and freestanding, but when I read, I, I didn't. Your plan also says, you know, so I was looking at the lighting plan, it says, "All existing tree limbs within sixty-foot ATM radius shown on plan shall be trimmed." But you said you weren't trimming trees.
Oh, we're not removing trees. There may be a slight trimming depending on the height of the tree and the clearance underneath it. So Bank of America has its own lighting security that we, we implement throughout the country to ensure proper illumination around the ATM for customer safety. As part of that, we make sure that there is no light being blocked at thirty-six inches and above. So the trees are slightly trimmed, I believe it's at six feet, that they are trimmed so it doesn't block any of the light generated from the, the poles. So that those areas are properly illuminated, that, that's, that's all that, that statement is.
I want to do a site visit.
Oh, yeah, yeah, for the, for the freestanding sign. Do we want to separate them? Can we separate them? Yeah, I suppose you probably could. Mr. Jean.
Perhaps if we're gonna take the time to do a site visit, that would give the applicant time to amend the application to exclude the freestanding sign and, and put it on the existing pylon. And then we could consider the signs on the ATM and the pylon sign and exclude the freestanding sign. Any sense to you there?
In, in tonight's, tonight's application?
We would, we would amend the, we would amend the application if the board's okay with that.
Yeah.
In the meantime, before the site visit, so that they can see, and then possibly you wanna see on the pylon sign how big their plan, what they have in mind. But if Jake says they need thirty days to make that happen, then everybody's got time to get the paperwork done and make the, the mock-ups. It seems like a reasonable.
Actually, we can continue to October, it's a, a pretty full agenda with us. We've run long before. You here?
Yeah. Sounds like a reasonable thing to do.
Yeah, just to, we'll continue the hearing to the October meeting and allow you to discuss with your, with your, with your client what to do with the freestanding signs. And then that, even make a decision within the thirty days whether to amend the existing application or not.
So we got to amend the application and just amend it?
Yep. All right. Okay.
Yeah.
All right. All right, so we'll leave the meeting open, the October meeting is the nineteenth, October the nineteenth. If in the thirty days you can come up with the mock-up and stuff like that, so we can arrange the site visit before the hearing?
Yeah.
That would be good?
Yeah.
That would be helpful, and just, you just let Rachel know, and she's pretty good at corralling all of us to come up with a common date, so.
I, I meant within thirty days, so you guys can have a good play next week.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So, so if we can get the site visit done and everything within the thirty days, then we should, we'd be in a better situation. Okay, the hearings continue to October the nineteenth, was that what I said?
Yeah.
Okay. Next case on the agenda is case number twenty twenty-one dash zero nine oh one. It's, it says a special permit for three oh eight West Broadway Starbucks signage. The first part of it is an application to construct two directional signs at three oh eight West Broadway, parcel ID R seventeen dash sixteen fourteen A. And it's located in the commercial two zoning district, and it was denied because it does not comply with six seventy, chapter six seventy-five dash nine seventy, letter D. Directional signs, directional signs may be erected near a street, driveway, a parking area if necessary for the safety and direction of vehicle or pedestrian traffic. Display area of each directional sign shall not exceed two square feet and no directional sign should be located more than six feet above the ground if mounted on a wall of a building or more than three and a half feet above the ground if freestanding. Directional signs shall not advertise, identify, promote any product, person, premises, but may identify the street name and number, provide directions of this quote, close quote, of the city code of gardener. The zoning code states that your use is not permitted in a commercial two zoning district. Second application is an application to construct a five-foot tall sign at three oh eight West Broadway, garden mask, parcel ID R seventeen dash sixteen dash fourteen A. It's located in the commercial two zoning district, it was denied because it did not comply with chapter six seventy-five, nine seventy, letter A. Quote, wall sign or individual letter sign, a wall sign or individual letter sign shall not exceed four feet in height. A wall sign or individual letter sign on the exterior wall of the first floor of a building shall not exceed an area two square feet for each linear foot of wall or eighty square feet, whichever is less. The length of signs of establishments occupied other than the first floor of a building shall not exceed six feet and no portion of wall sign or individual sign shall project more than one foot above the face of the wall or above the wall of any building. In no case shall a sign project above a parapet wall. Establishment may, may divide the entire display area permitted herein to separate wall signs or individual letter signs provided the maximum height of each separate sign does not exceed the maximum height permitted herein and the sum of aggregate width and area of a separate sign does not exceed the maximum permitted herein. That's one heck of a long sentence. Close quote, South City Code of Gardener. The zoning code states that the use request is not permitted for use in the zoning district. Uh, do we have the representative of Starbucks here this evening?
Hi, my name's Andy, I'm from Silver Dollar Signs.
Okay, Mr. Silver, the first question for you. You submitted as a special permit, the application is a special permit, it's actually a variance. Um, is there a reason why you chose a special permit over a variance?
When we, unless I misunderstood on what we needed to apply for.
You're, you're requesting, your, your, your requests are deviating or, or, um, you're seeking relief from the requirements of the zoning board, which is, of the zoning act, zoning code, which is a variance.
When we get the information, I believe we've reached out to the town in this direction, we should go with this and I believe we're led to believe that it was supposed to be a special permit that we applied for.
Unless I'm missing something, Mr. Jean, am I?
I believe you're correct.
Okay. So what would you like to do? Do you wanna continue the hearing and regroup, because there's a few things you'll need to address as a variance which is different than a special permit?
I guess we'll have to continue. It's not what I was, the understanding I would apply for something.
Okay.
Usually when we get an I want something we have, we're trying to tell them this direction to go. And I believe the information that was given to us was that we filed a special permit for this, that's why I went that direction.
Desire the board, do you wanna do, you wanna continue and just answer as he goes, or do we?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to go down, down that path. I just assume have a clean.
Be prepared.
Clean application so we can look at it.
Okay, well, we'll continue it then, um, October, here we go.
So who can I speak with within this city so I get the proper information? Because when we called to get the information, I was basically told that I should hire a lawyer. And I've done many of variances, special permits and.
Yeah, you don't have to hire an attorney, a lot of people come in like you, like yourself that represent a client.
The rest of my assistants spoke to us first words from the person within the city saying, you should hire a lawyer. And I believe we had to, and then we asked what we should apply for and with all the special.
Well, I apologize if you received the wrong, wrong message, I mean, the building commissioner is here and he's the, you know, the enforcement of the building code.
He's, he's a very busy man, and I needed somebody else to speak to to get the proper information. So what do I, who do I talk to and what do I do at this point, you know, to continue to amend this for the zoning?
What I would do is submit with, you can submit the same application, I would cross off special permit, check off variance instead, and go through, there's, within the package that you received, there should have been the three issues that you need to address as for variance, which I discussed with this gentleman here earlier. And, you know, address that in the application and then just resubmit it to the office as an amended application. I would waive a resubmital fee. Yeah, I'm, I'm okay.
So who, what's the person's name within the town or the city that I speak to on this?
Well, Rachel is our administrative assistant and the zoning court enforcement is the building commissioner. Mr. Jean.
I wanted to think, you don't argue with building inspector, so I'll leave on a good note. This would, it took us a long time to get the information we needed to get this application in place.
Oh, I.
And again, everyone's busy and I was, I believe this was the information I needed to apply, so.
Okay, I apologize if you didn't, you, you received erroneous information.
So if I can get the proper information in as I'm hearing, we just spoke to the last one about October's a pretty busy meeting, so am I waiting till November?
Well, I know, I know, I know, um, this is obviously a front burner issue for, for the, for the store too.
What the store did in all fairness to the board as well is they needed to get signs put up. So we applied, we're gonna put signs up for the sizes that are allowed. So I, we also, I guess at this point we requested the board go by and look at the signs that are up there because part of my fight's gonna be signs on the two wall signs. So with due respect, if I can request in the meantime before the next meeting.
I drive by there several times a week, so. I as do I. Yeah, so, yeah.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Okay. Oh, motion to continue?
So what?
To October?
Yes.
To October. So Rachel, since you left, can you just let him know it's continued till October, please? Thank you. Okay, the next, and item we had on the agenda was acceptance of some minutes from previous meetings. Actually, we have some additional business, further business for the board was a conversation with attorney Tree to Rachel regarding a site visit at West, West Broadway subdivision, she wants to know availability. But I think that's, that Ray's sitting on that case, so we need to.
Yeah.
Worry about that with Ray. Last item is the acceptance of the minutes, and I'll be, I'll entertain a motion then to accept the minutes of the meeting, August seventeenth, twenty-twenty-one.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Second, uh, minutes to approve is site visit at two-sixty-two Elm Street on August the twenty-first, twenty-twenty-one, at nine AM.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Site visit, uh, seventy-five Oak Street, August twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-one, at six o'clock.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. And decision meeting minutes dated September the fourteenth, twenty-twenty-one, at six-thirty.
Moves to be accepted is corrected.
Seconded.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Close none. Any other business before the board? No? Hearing none? Intertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Meeting adjourned.